How are we going to sequence? Now, we're starting with alphabet.
I'll let you know.
All right, everyone, on behalf of the Claremont County Chamber of Commerce, thank you so much for tuning into our first 2021 candidate forum. This evening, we're happy to be hosting the five candidates seeking two seats on the Union Township Board of Trustees. My name is Andrew McAfee, and I am the Director of Government Affairs here at the Chamber. I'm joined tonight by my colleague Heather Fry, who was the Director of Development here at the Chamber.
That's me, in case you didn't know who I was. That's me.
And we're also pleased tonight to be partnering with the Claremont Sun. So with us co-moderating tonight is Brett Mylum, the editor of the Claremont Sun. Brett, give any sort of opening remarks?
I just wanted to thank the Chamber for putting all this together, they handled all the logistics, they got all the candidates out here, and thank you to the candidates for coming out here. As Heather said before we started recording, the purpose tonight is to educate and inform voters. So that's what we want to do.
Awesome. Heather was talking before we went live that the mission here at the Chamber is very simple. To transform Claremont County to be the world's preferred place to locate, operate, and grow a successful business. In order to achieve this, it is vital that our almost 700 business members and their thousands of employees know where their current and prospective elected officials stand on issues impacting our community. That is why we're here today, to educate and to inform our members and the community about where these candidates stand on important issues and what plans they have on improving our community. The rules tonight are pretty simple. Each candidate will give a two-minute opening statement. Selection of the order of presentation will be alphabetical by last name. Questions have been solicited from the community and our Chamber members in advance and will be directed to specific candidates. Some questions will be asked of all candidates. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to each question. There'll be a 30-second rebuttal time if a specific candidate is mentioned in the response. Before a candidate has provided his answer to a specific question, the remaining candidates may request the opportunity to address the same question and be given one minute to do so. The moderators here will have the responsibility of enforcing the ground rules and format, maintaining order, and keeping the discussion focused on the current election issues. Heather will be our timekeeper. She will hold up a blue folder when a candidate has half of his time left and a red folder when a candidate has 15 seconds left. At the end of the forum, each candidate will be given two minutes to provide a closing statement in reverse alphabetical form. So with that, we will get started on opening statements. Mr. John Becker, you are first.
All right.
Sure, I'm John Becker. I'm a former state representative. I covered most of Claremont County, the population of Claremont County, including Union Township. So none of the candidates up here have the depth or the breadth of the background and credentials that I have. So to kind of quickly go down my resume, I have 30 years in the private sector. That's in addition to eight years in the Ohio General Assembly, private sector experience, both in finance, accounting field. Also have a background in medical insurance, HMOs, managed care, and also manufacturing. My education includes a Xavier University MBA with emphasis in taxation. I went to Xavier University, went to Northern Kentucky University. Got my undergrad in business management with a minor in psychology. Also a certified treasury professional, and I'm a graduate of the Union Township Suicide Police Academy. In addition to all of that, I have a school district treasurer's license. So I've also been a homeowner in Union Township for 30, 30-some-odd years, 35 years maybe. And the Union Township is very important to me, that things get, stay on track when things are going well and that things get fixed where they're not going well.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Dills?
Well, first off, I want to say, thank you to the Chamber. Thank you for all three of you for doing this. Great for you to take your time out here today. Appreciate that. My name is Joe Dills, and I'm running for trustee right here in Union Township. I'm married to my wife, Nakia, and we've got three awesome kiddos. They keep me young and love being a dad. And I'm also an Air Force veteran, and I currently serve in the United States Air Force Reserves of the Wright Patterson Air Force Base. I'm proud to be a patriot and do my part to serve my country. You know, and also I'm a business owner. I was self-employed for nearly decades, started several companies, and now I work as a sales director for a local company here in Claremont County. You know, so you might have seen it, there was a darkmailer money pack that went out to everyone's mailbox, and again, more dark money Claremont County. It sounds like a Larry Household style tactic, but it painted me as being against development. That's a completely false statement. I'm absolutely pro-development. I'm actually pro-jobs, creating new jobs. I just want to see smart development, meaning let's preserve our green space here in Union Township. Let's preserve having just a smart development with green space and good development. You know, having an entrepreneurial background, I understand what business owners go through. Business owners want to focus on their companies, managing them, their employees, their customers, and with my background, they can be trusted to know that I'll have their best interests at heart. You know, over on Runkie Road, there was something called the Miller Development. You might have heard about it. And those folks, their voices weren't heard. They got nearly 4,000 signatures and they were ignored. And we had a forum just like this, similar to this, a couple weeks ago. And what did the trustees say to them? I'm quoting them, "Move on and get over it." You can't do that. Could you imagine if a business owner or manager had an unhappy customer and they said they could move on and get over it? That's not good business. And so as your trustee, I will listen. I will listen to the business owners, the business community, and listen, most importantly, to the voters and the residents, not what we want, but what the voters want of Union Township. Thank you.
Joe?
Right on time.
Mr. McGee?
Thank you very much, Eric. Thank you for putting on this phone tonight. I thank the Chamber and those at the table before me for allowing us to come in here this evening. I'm Bob McGee. I am one of the incumbent trustees for Union Township. And Union Township is my home. It has been my home for more than 55 years. I love this community, and I think that I have been a part of making it the best township in the state of Ohio. We have the best employees, greatest safety services, and very effective, efficient safety services. I have been a part of helping make Union Township great, and I want to continue to serve my community. I also am proud husband to Betty McGee, my wife. I have two daughters. One is passed, and I have three grandchildren. We've, I am a United States Navy veteran with six years, a naval petty officer. I'm a retired railroad freight conductor, 23 years on the Conrail system. Retired chief belt for Claremont County municipal board of 12 years. I'm a Union Township zoning commissioner for five years. I served Union Township trustee three terms. Membership in organizations. I belong to the Crosspoint Baptist Church and have been a member there for 50 years. A member of the past master of JP Gilbert and Sonic Lodge, the past president of the Six Mon, Sonic District, serving Brown and Claremont County. President, past president of Union Township Quonis Club, member of University Cincinnati Alumni Association, who graduated UC also. Member of the Township Association here in Union Township. I'm also a member of the National Rifle Association, and I have a carrying concealed weapon. And I am also a proud member of American Legion Post 72 here in Mount Carm. I'd like to thank you for giving me the time.
John?
Thank you. I want to thank the Chamber for putting this event on. I also like to thank all the candidates for taking the time to come here and discuss the issues. I know this gentleman here, I just met Mr. Quick tonight, and it seems like a nice gentleman. We live near each other, so hopefully we'll get to know each other better in the future. So I think it's great to have everyone here and answer some questions. Being a good trustee and having a great place to live is all about momentum, positive momentum, keeping positive. There've been a lot of negative things that keep being brought up about this campaign and really Union Township. There's a lot of positive things happening, and this is a great place to live. Since I've been a trustee, we've had over $800 million in new development. We collaborated with West Claremont to build a new high school, which led to new elementary schools. So we have a lot of great things going. I want to live in Union Township. My family is here. I've been married to one person going on 28 years, and I'm very proud of that. And I've been a baseball coach. I've been on the PTO. I've been a trustee. So my experience in the business community goes over almost 35 years in business management. I've been in supervisory positions almost since I started working. And I think bringing that valuable, hands-on business management to the township has been a real plus. I think if you talk to any of the employees, we have great employees. I think they'll tell you that they really like trustees and like working for us. So I think all those things are important, but it's all about positive momentum. And negativity is not going to get us anywhere. We've got to have bright, positive ideas to keep more things happening. If you're not growing, then you might be dying. And there's communities around Cincinnati where you can see evidence of that. So I'm really proud of our record, and I look forward to talking about it soon.
Mr. Quick?
Hello, thank you. I want to also thank Claremont Sun and the Chamber for putting this on for us. Thank you also to the panelists. Actually, I want to thank our veterans here as well. I'm a veteran as well. And all the veterans watching via livestream, thank you for your service. I appreciate that. Actually, Bob is actually closer than you are. He's right in my backyard. He did not know that. When the leaves fall off the trees, then I'll be able to see them, but we live in a creek area, so we can't see each other right now. I want to introduce myself. My name is Reverend Chad Quick. I currently manage the Pastoral Care Department at Bethesda North Hospital. Prior to that, I spent my time in ministry as a hospice chaplain for more than 15 years. I am a proud United States Marine Corps veteran. I have a bachelor's degree in philosophy from Northern Kentucky University, a master's degree in affinity. I have five years' management experience with premier training groups of student, leadership development classes, and have had training in budgeting and leadership. I currently live in Union Township with my wife for 29 years. I enjoy travel, reading, playing guitar, and visiting with my grandchildren. And to cut it short, since my card is about up, I love the mission statement of Claremont County Chamber. It is to make Claremont County the preferred place to locate, operate, and grow successfully. And also the place where we want to live. So I want to bring that livability. There's a lot of talk about business and growth. That's all good. It needs to be balanced, though, with protecting our current residents. They have an idea the suburb and that they want to keep it that way. Thank you.
All right, our first question, which will be a group question, and you will each answer it individually. Describe the role of a township trustee in your own words. And for this one, we'll start with Mr. Dills.
So trustee, the word is right there in the title, trust. You have to be able to have a trusting relationship with the residents and the voters of this community. And that starts with listening. That's first and foremost. When you're an elected official, your number-one job or number-one priority, in my opinion, is to listen to what the voters want and what the residents want for their community. I mentioned in my opening statement, I'm going to say it again, there was nearly 4,000 signatures to fight our current trustees. And the trustees flat out ignored them, and they said, "Move on and get over it." That's not building trust, and so that needs to change. As far as being a trustee, your job is to oversee the functions of the township, which include zoning, parks, and most importantly, the police, fire, EMS, and our dispatch call center, which I will always, always support them. But I'll wrap up this with saying that the number-one role as an elected official and trustee is to listen to your people and constituents. Thank you.
Mr. McGee, describe the role of a township trustee in your own words.
Well, I think, first off, we have to make ourselves available to the community. And someone calls, and they do call, believe me. They call and want their potholes taken care of, their stop signs put up, or maybe a person in the neighborhood has large amounts of debris in their yard. We have to answer those calls. Sometimes they're nice, sometimes they're not, but we have to listen to the community and hear the concerns and act upon them as graciously as possible. And to continue for the best health, safety, and welfare of our community, because after all, we work for you. We work for the township. And I believe that we should put our best foot forward, and I think that's about all we need right now. God bless all of you.
Mr. McGraw?
Being a trustee is being a leader in the community. It's a person who has to be responsive and answer questions and be part of the community. Union Township is a very big township. I don't know the exact number, but there's a lot of counties that have smaller populations in Union Township in Ohio. So trustee in Union Township might be different than a trustee in another township, maybe a smaller one. So we have a big organization. So I think the trustee in Union Township has to be a leader. We have a police department, a fire department, service department. We've got a zoning department. We have office staff. All these things are important to the lives of our residents. So we have to empower these people to be administrators of their departments and do a great job. So I believe, as a trustee, you have to trust the people you hire to put in those positions. And at the same time, you have to be very responsive to all the residents, because that's who you're working for. You're answering their questions, and questions might be about, "What's this new development?" I believe in not passing the buck. They say there's a pothole on Glen S.C. Williamsville Road. Well, that's a county road. I could say, like a lot of past trustees would have said, "Well, call the county. That's, call the county engineer to go fix it for you." I don't believe in that. I'll call the county engineer. I'll ask them to fix the pothole. So I think as a trustee, there's a lot of things that go on that aren't our responsibility, but I think you still have to be that liaison for the resident to, you know, maybe it's a broken fire hydrant. We're not the water department, but I can call the water department to get that fire hydrant fixed. So I believe stick with the residents and answer their questions, be responsive, and get the job done.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Quick?
Yes, I love that word trustee. It means trust. I love that answer. That's absolutely right. I think that a trustee is someone who is in charge of the community that he serves. I want to talk about servant leadership at a later question. It actually began, the pilgrims brought that idea over, of townships and self-governance. And I think self-governance is really important here, because some of the things that the county and the state are not able to see, the trustees are able to have eyes on, and they're actually the ones that are down on the ground doing the grunt work for residents. I do like the idea also of being responsive. If you see it, you own it. No passing the buck, and I appreciate that. I did hear some complaining as I cast, cascaded around, you know, there's always drainage and basement issues. Housing is making the things too crowded, high grass and weeds. I think we need to bring a sense of customer service to the people of Union Township. It has to do with being responsive, and I think being responsive earns that trust. But it's also about having relationships. It's about having relationships with businesses. It's about understanding growth and development. It's about understanding where the Chamber is, and I think too often we get siloed in our different agencies. For example, if somebody came and asked a trustee, "I think I saw somebody trafficked in Walmart," would you just say, "Well, you need to call the police"? Would you pick that up and say, "Okay, I'm going to help you with this. We're going to find out together"?
Thank you. Mr. Becker?
Well, so the answer is really one sentence, give you a short answer. I will continue, though. A trustee sets the policy for the township. It's really that simple. So now we can get into, well, which of those policies fit. So which gets me into my platform. So the first thing I like to lead with is smart development, not residential overdevelopment. And of course, what comes to mind, we've had a similar place. Well, I live back there, and I'm the only candidate who was involved in that when it was going on. So when it mattered the most, John Becker was the guy who was there standing up for the people. And I have a reputation for standing up for the people against the establishment. So a lot of that has been quite, quite public. I also want to see, you know, an emphasis on beautiful neighborhoods rather than apartment complexes and, you know, storage cubes and dollar stores and tattoo parlors. You know, the percentage of single-family homes as a total housing stock is in decline, and that bothers me. You know, I made, you know, 4,500 phone calls as part of this campaign to voters in Union Township to find out, you know, what is it they like, don't like, any concerns that they have, things we're doing right, things we're doing wrong. I got a lot of answers. I took a lot of notes. One of them had to do with taxes. You know, I talked to people who are literally being forced out of their homes, senior citizens on a fixed income. So, you know, taxes are a problem, and that's something we need to be paying attention to. Of course, there's public safety issues, and public safety has to be job one. You know, the one complaint I heard more than anything else was roads. You know, roads oftentimes, you know, you have dangerous intersections. It's a public safety issue. Cyclops can also be a public safety issue. You know, there's people with neighborhoods that are talking about speeders that are driving up and down their street, which is creating a dangerous situation for children. And they're asking about, "Why can't we get speed tables in our neighborhood"? Well, that's a good question. I see other neighborhoods with speed tables. That concludes my remarks.
Thanks, John.
Just on time. All right.
Heather?
I think it's my turn to ask the question. Okay. So I, my question is for Mr. McGee. Correct. Okay. You've been on the board for quite a while now. Wow, now. And thank you for your service. What is your biggest accomplishment and your biggest disappointment or challenge in all these years?
Well, first off, I think, talking about townships again. A township is the purest form of government in the state of Ohio. You know, with three elected trustees, the board is able to efficiently and quickly respond to all the needs of all people. Your question was?
Yes, what is your biggest accomplishment and your biggest disappointment or challenge in your years of service?
Oh, thank you very much. I have noticed that if once, excuse me.
You're fine.
The biggest problem or challenge for Union Township is how to continue the economic development in spite of the negative impacts of COVID-19. Small businesses are still suffering, and larger companies are still evaluating your futures. We need to continue to promote the community as a welcoming and helpful township to the businesses. We also need to dispel the thought that Union Township is only concerned about the next best project. Of course, we are always looking to improve and add new businesses and developments, but everything we do is with the recognition that our existing community will benefit from these challenges. I appreciate our residents, because many of the people here are my friends. I go to church with them. I shop here. I eat at the restaurants. I even fill my gas at the gas stations here in Union Township. We must change and adapt, or we will begin to deteriorate. Some decisions are hard, and they may be some inconvenience, but overall, I want to continue to enhance our parks, our recreation areas, and keep the civic center open to the public. And I promise to work for the best interest of the community and not just a select few. Thank you, Senator.
Right, Mr. Becker, this question is for you. Given the increase in the use of economic development tools like TIPS and JETS throughout the region, how does your experience in finance shape your views on using those tools?
That's a great question. Sure. So, you know, so, you know, talk about both TIPS and JETS. So I have mixed feelings on both. You know, first off, with JETS, I just personally hate the income tax. I tried to get rid of it when I was a state representative. At least, you know, we were able to scale back the rates. I wanted to get rid of the Ohio marriage penalty. That didn't happen either. So I just have this kind of personal issue with an income tax. I also have a personal issue with senior citizens getting taxed out of their homes because the property tax is being high. So if I have to decide between a JET, which is going to tax the incoming people that work there, versus an increase in property taxes that are going to force seniors out of their home, I'll take the JET every time. Regarding TIPS, I do think that's a very valuable tool to be used for economic development. I'll just describe it briefly. You know, a lot of people don't know what a TIPS is. And I'm certainly no expert. I'm just going to give you a high level, what I do understand, or what I think I understand. It's tax increment financing, or tax increment funding, whichever it is. So you have an example, if you've got a piece of land, maybe it's agriculture, and it has, it's being taxed at low value. That land gets purchased, it gets developed, it becomes a shopping center, factory, whatever it is, that land now has a much higher value. That being a TIPS property, the difference between those two numbers are the dollars that then fund infrastructure projects to attract that business to begin with. So whether it be sewer, you know, water, you know, gas, whatever it is they need for that developer to bring that in to the township is a very valuable tool, and I support that. And the question would come in is, you know, does every project need to be tipped? I guess, does every project need an incentive to come into Union Township? So I think it's a very valuable tool. I'm generally supportive of them, just in JETS both. But like anything else, I'll look at it on a case-by-case basis, and I'm open to supportive and opposing ideas.
Thanks, John. Next question for you, Mr. Dills, and this came from one of our Chamber members. You've now sought two different offices within the last 18 months. What similarities do you see between serving as a Union Township trustee and a state representative?
Yeah, good question. Makes you a question. So when you serve as an elected official, it doesn't matter what position it is, your number-one goal and focus is to serve the people that you're representing. So that doesn't change. So my number-one goal and number-one focus is to listen to the residents. And again, it's not, it's not what I want, it's what the residents want for the future. And so, you know, I've got, I've got three young kids, a 12-year-old daughter, a six-year-old daughter, a three-year-old son. And so the decisions that I make don't just affect you and I today. They affect my kid's future directly. So I'll take that very seriously. But I'm an Air Force veteran, and the military teaches you service before self, putting the mission first. And so that means putting the residents first over myself. And so when I make a decision as a trustee, elected official, it's about listening to what the voters want for the future and not what I want. You know, which also goes hand-in-hand with being business-friendly. I want to have a relationship with our business community, with our Chamber of Commerce, and as well as our county elected officials, like our county commissioners. That's important. And so we need to have an open line of communication and be business-friendly. So but as far as that, as elected official, you need to make a loud statement with being supportive of your safety services. And I will always support our police, our fire, EMS, as well as our call center, dispatch center. Absolutely. And so, and with that being said, I'm actually the only candidate up here that is endorsed by the police, FOP Lodge 112, and I pay great pride of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Quick, this question is for you, and it comes from the community. What are you looking to bring to the table as a new voice to the board if elected?
I think absolutely a new voice and a new perspective, because many of the people on the panel have lived here for quite some time. I think sometimes you grow used to seeing things. I know when you come into the 275 Loop on 32, one of the first things you see is weeds, trash, and chain link fences. And if you zoom out of, on Google Maps or whatever, you look down on the area, all you see is a bunch of buildings and a bunch of parking lots with weeds. So there's an aesthetic there that I think sometimes we overlook. So I bring a new perspective. I also bring, I believe, actually, everybody's asking, "Why are you around"? So I honestly respond as, I feel called to this. I have served in the military. I've served in the ministry, and I want to serve the local community. So part of what I bring is actual listening. So part of what I bring is actual listening. That has been my career. When you say about listening, we can throw money at everything, but what really does the fire and police need? Do they need just more money or do they need the right training? Do they need the right mental health? Do they need the right equipment? I know as a Marine, we had equipment from World War Two. So listening, actually listening and hearing is important as trustee.
Thank you, Mr. Quick. Next question for you, Mr. McGraw, came from another one of our chamber members. Union Township has seen quite the economic boom over the last several years. However, the township also had to ask for two sizable safety services levy. Are these two things related?
Well, as the township grows, yeah, you know, the expense of police and fire does go up. But at the same time, we've had really good labor relations with both our firefighters, firefighters and our police unions and have really good contracts with them. So all those things, most of it, it's going to be payrolls where a lot of that money comes from. But as a trustee, I've worked really hard to bring in developments, use the TIF process to try to avoid, as long as possible, asking for those types of tax increases. And the Miller Place, which has been brought up by some of the candidates in this campaign, would have been a good source of revenue for both of those services. We would have probably brought in about five million dollars a year for safety services if Miller Place had been built. And also seven million dollars for our schools. But because it wasn't built, that changed, you know, the plans of what we had to do to fund our safety services. So we asked the residents to support our police and fire and they did overwhelmingly. And I think we have one of the best police departments. We have one of the best fire departments. They're well trained. They have good equipment. But we're also very careful to buy equipment that is affordable and makes sense. We can buy ambulances for a little over a hundred thousand dollars where other communities are buying half a million dollar ambulances. So it's those kind of things that are smart ways to use the money. But, you know, development can't pay for everything. And what I've heard too, that, you know, going door to door, that people don't want to pay more real estate taxes and we try to find creative ways to keep the real estate taxes as low as possible.
I'd like to respond, that's right. So he did not specifically mention.
Well, I'm the one that brought up Miller Development, so it would be me, just talking about when you bring.
You weren't the only candidate that brought up the Miller Development.
Brad?
This is a group question for all of you. So the township is expected to receive over four million dollars in COVID relief funds from the federal government. What do you each think should be done with these funds? And we'll start with Mr. McGee, please.
I don't think we've really had a discussion on this matter until we get the funding available for us. And when it comes in, there'll be a discussion with the administrative staff and the trustees together. Hopefully it'll make it before the end of the year. See a change or not see a change. But I, I hope and pray that we use it for what it's mandated for. I don't know the complete mandate and what, what, what they are mandating funds for. Some is could be for bar, some could be place, some could be for, like our COVID, our new firehouse is COVID built. We have COVID interests in there for those people that may or may not have contracted COVID and those for vaccinating and everything else and the money for that bar house would use some COVID relief funds. And we're, we're using it very frugal with it. And I think we'll continue to be frugal with that money and COVID money that's coming down from the government. I would like to see that money be brought to as soon as possible. We can use it in that funding of, like I said, hiring new places, new farming, new communication people. And staffing our safety services is very important to us. We're down on all, all levels of them. We should be up maybe three or four for our department, four, three or four for the police department and our communications staff. We run very low on communications. I think we had sixteen communication people, thousands of calls. Every year, thousands of calls. Thank you very much, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Mr. McGraw?
I don't think the, these funds should be used for something that's going to cause more expense in the future. I think they should be money that's invested back into the community and used in the best way possible. You know, one of the ideas I thought would be good would be to help pay off the remainder of the firehouses being built on Peachwood Road, Station Fifty-Three. It's a new firehouse. It was built with forward thinking for helping with the next pandemic or emergency, whatever that is. Drive-through days for, for getting shots, a place to store PPE. So I think that would be a good use of the funds to go ahead and pay for this fire station. Um, maybe another thing would be to invest in the future of Union Township. I think the mall is a huge problem. A lot of people see in our community. If there was a opportunity to make an investment there, you know, the mall started back in the early seventies, mid seventies, I believe. And then we've had like a good forty year run of jobs and things happening at the mall providing for our community. But as everybody knows, the mall's winding down and there's some issues there right now. I think we need to repurpose the mall and find a new way to make that property a destination. So, you know, perhaps some, somebody can be invested there. So I think we need good ideas to forward thinking, not spend it on something that's going to cost us more money out of our budget.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. Mr. Quick?
I've got so many creative ideas. I don't know where to start. Of course, I don't know how the money's mandated either, but we have got a blighting taking place. The mall is one issue, but we've got fences everywhere. We, we need to beautify this to help us to locate people that want to come into Union Township. And of course, there's always the corporate capture strategy. What are we doing with that? But we also have to protect our, our, our citizens. I mean, what, what does it mean to bring big corporation in? You know, we can have housing developments as long as they're responsible. We don't want to do anything to hurt our environment. The parks we have, I was very upset to hear that we have a terrible obesity problem with our youth. Youth depression is one of the biggest problems with Claremont Health. Suicides are, are looming large in our county. So I would love to see more activities for youth. How can we plug that back in? And I also want that money to be used on local businesses. If we're gonna do contract, I want the contracts to be us regain that money back, build our businesses here. So I've got tons of ideas about the mall and everything else, but I won't wait two minutes. So, but we certainly could address some of the issues that some of the complaints are talking about. There are still drainage issues. There are housing issues, grass and weed issues. Let's make this a livable walking place. I, I don't know how many times I've hit, almost hit somebody crossing thirty-two. Do we have a pedestrian passageway? There's all kinds of things we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Quick.
So, yeah, a lot of that has to do with what strings are attached, you know. Logically, you say, well, COVID money ought to be used for COVID. Well, however, we get, you know, federal state funds for all kinds of stuff and, you know, this is specifically earmarked. And, and, you know, we can use money however we want. So I don't know what that is for COVID, you know, is it specifically for COVID or, or is it broad? So that could be the first question. You know, one of the concerns that I have, and maybe this could be used for this money, I don't know, is the, the debt that the township holds. If you were to run the numbers, it's, look at all the expenses that the Union Township has. The debt ratio is forty percent. Payments on debt, forty percent of all of the expenses with township. Now, it's also, need to clarify, a lot of that debt is simply the rolling over of bonds annually. No, sorry, not bonds, short-term notes that get rolled over annually as part of that forty percent. So the issue with those short-term notes is that they are susceptible to changes in interest rates. So as we know, inflation is upon us. Interest rates are very likely to follow, we'll see. And when that happens, then the interest rates that the township is going to be paying is also going to increase. So I'm concerned about the debt we have, the makeup of the debt and, and the interest that's going to be costing us moving forward. I think something we ought to be looking at is, should we be paying off that debt? Or should we be rolling over that, or converting a short-term debt into longer term bonds to lock in the current interest rates? Otherwise, you know, if, if we could use that kind of money for public safety type, type of stuff, you know, road improvements would come to mind, maybe repaving, you know, through the major highways or even neighborhood roads. So just all depends on what strings are attached and what all our options are. Certainly plenty of ways to spend on it.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
Brad, thanks for the question. I think I would first challenge our, our current trustees to, to wait until next month, until the voters have spoken. I've not spent a single dime of that money until the voters have spoken who the new leadership will be. That would be responsible. So right now we receive two and a half million, roughly two and a half million this year. We get it out to that next year. Well, I did, I did hear a lot of good ideas, but first thing I would say first is, is why don't we listen to what the residents want? That would be the wise thing to do. I don't think we should go out quickly spend it on anything. Let's, let's put a pause on it, let's call the brakes and, and see what the residents want. I, I would be open to a town hall style, meaning where we listen to what the residents want for good ideas. I can come up with all my ideas, but it's really about representing the people of Union Township and their thoughts and their ideas of how it should be used. And making sure that's wisely spent. So my answer is pretty simple is, is I would listen to the residents and be open to that and make a decision based off what the residents want, not necessarily what I want.
Thank you, Joe. Next question is for you, Mr. McGee. With the years of experience on the board between you and, and Mr. McGraw, what fresh ideas and perspectives will you bring to another term?
Fresh ideas? I think we're gonna continue looking for development. Development is what's kept us rolling and moving forward, making us a great area for people to live, work and play. And I think we've done very well with it. We have an administrative staff that keeps looking constantly for new business to bring in and they're doing well with it. And figure out whether they're capable of fitting into the community or not. Fine staff that we have to do that has done very well in the past. I think you need to find something in this mall situation is is terrible, as John has mentioned, and other people have mentioned. We need to do something with this mall because of what happened to Forest Fair and the other things that just going down. It's becoming a blighted area. We need to get somebody in there. Right now it's in bankruptcy, as you well know. And there are, I think, five or six owners still waiting to do what they want to do. I think we need to talk to those people and see if we can get in there, maybe get them open in there and take care of it. Start some, maybe some small store. Apartment complexes in there. Work in the stores, keep the store prospering forward. I think that we have people here who are capable of this area, they're getting somebody in there, get something done. They're developers, they're working here and do it. Get to the dentist, see if we can get this working, get, get the bottom. Get in the cellar, get to work together. Cause we're, we're really down in that area. It's, it's terrible. It used to be a fine facility back in the seventies, John said, and it's, it's gone now. Malls are a thing of the past anymore. Need to look forward to. Blue Garden, be a Rick or me. Thank you. Thank you.
Adam?
My turn. Walk back up two minutes. All right. So my question is for you, Mr. Becker. This is actually came from one of our chamber members, so thank you for submitting it. You've touted your Columbus connections will serve you as a township trustee. However, you've also made a lot of enemies in Columbus, for example, by attempting to have the city governor arrested. If you are elected, what impact does your time in Columbus have on being a township trustee?
What was the last part of the question?
If elected, what impact does your time served in Columbus will have being a township trustee?
Sure. So, okay, so my experience in Columbus, how will it serve as being a trustee? It's real simple. I know who to call in Columbus. You know, I've already had lunch with the president of the OTA, Iowa Township Association. And, you know, we were talking through township issues and, and, you know, taking notes and learning a lot from them. You know, knowing how legislation works, you know, if there's bills that are pending that affects Union Township, whether it's positive or negative, you know, I know how this system works in Columbus. Nobody else does. But if that's at this table, you know, when the if we do need changes in legislation, again, I need, I know how to, how to get that done. And who to call and how that system works and ideas of getting, getting amendments attached to bills. I had that success multiple times and getting that done. So, you know, my experience in Columbus, you know, I made enemies. Sure, I made enemies. You know, when, when you stand on principle and you stand up for the people, you stand against the establishment when you have to, then yes, you do make enemies. And I'll find that. So, yeah, I'd rather make enemies and stand for something than, than, you know, have everybody my friend and stand for helping.
Thank you.
Mr. Dills, this question is for you. You were recently endorsed by the Union Township Republican Party, but not everyone in Union Township is a Republican. So what is your pitch to Democrat independent voters?
Brad, thanks for the question. It's a good question. We did have the endorsement just this past week for the Union Township Republican Party. All four of us Republicans up here saw that endorsement. And I was the only one blessed with that honor and I was grateful to have that very much. And I, and I understand there's Democrats, there's independents and there's Republicans. And as an elected official, you have to represent all the people and hear their voices. I am a conservative. I am a liberty minded constitutionalist. I don't hide that fact. And look, it's okay. We're not always going to, to agree on everything. Ask my wife. So we, I think it's more on a national level though. Here locally, Democrats, Republicans, we all want good parks. We all want good roads. We all want what's best for our community. So, but the one thing is, is if a constituent and a voter, a resident comes to me with a concern, I don't need to know their party affiliation. I just need to know what their concern is and how can I help if I can help it? If not, how can I solve it? So the main point is, is, is I plan on listening to the residents that I represent. What's best for them.
Thanks, Joe. Mr. Quick, how will you weigh your own personal values, input from your fellow board members and diverse views from the community when making decisions if elected?
That's a great question. I think that it takes a listening ear. One that is able to hear those diverse voices. And, and that's absolutely right. And I think this, this is an administrative role. So there's a way to be able to hear everybody. It's not just potholes and construction, though. There are many more issues here in Union Township that can be addressed. And that's why I don't want to be in a silo, like I said before. There are other organizations that we can have relationships and talk to. And part of the diversity is not just understanding our differences, but also understanding our similarities. Being able to hear when somebody says, I'm being excluded. And also, what does that mean? We have fairly homogeneous place here in Union Township, but at the same time, it's very diverse. We have people that are travelers that work down in Cincinnati. We have people that work here. We have a more diverse neighborhood ethnically than I realized after I was canvassing. So being able to hear all those voices, again, it's not a political thing. It's actually able to listen and be attentive to what the people are saying. I understand that it's important to get nomination. I want my nomination to be from the people. I want them to nominate for doing a good job for them and being a good listener and a servant leader.
Thank you. Mr. McGraw, this next question is for you and it comes from the community. The Mueller development case has been talked about a lot during this campaign and tonight. What was the biggest lesson you learned from that case?
As a trustee, every vote you make affects people, whether it's makes them mad, makes them happy, but every vote affects people, whether it's makes them mad, makes them happy, but every vote counts. And, um, I've been on the board for eight years and you see that happen over and over, but in Miller Place case, um, I did listen to the residents. We did get a lot of opportunity for input. I personally drove to one of the homes in the Rumpy Road area and met with residents. And I had them give me a list of what are your top concerns? And we went down that list and worked very hard to, um, meet all the things on that list, including, uh, they were concerned about converting septic systems over. We got that paid for. They were concerned about safe streets over there in traffic. And we got the developer to concede to build a whole new rumpy road with sidewalks and sewers. They were concerned about, um, the environment and what the impact of new homes would have, like especially on the nature center. I'm a member of the nature center. There is a huge sewer waste pump station there that was built even before this development came forward to handle that. But at the end of the day, trying to find the number of units and homes that people could be satisfied with was a difficult task. And, but I had to think what was best, not just for Miller Place residents, but all the residents of Union Township. Yeah. How is this new development going to affect everybody living throughout the entire township, not just off a rumpy road? And if we could have worked better to get to the number of units that they would have been satisfied with, I think we could have had a nice development. So I think everybody would look at a map, you could see that area and say, you know, where's the next street going? It looks like there should be more streets and they're stopped. And so, um, at this time, that land pays very little tax revenue. And everybody's concerned about pressure on people's, um, real estate taxes. Well, that area is not paying very many real estate taxes to our township.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Believe it or not, we're already coming up on an hour, so we are going to start with, um, our closing statements.
Already?
Already.
Are you sure?
Thirty minutes.
Would you guys like to stay another hour?
So for these, we will start, um, each candidate will get two minutes and we'll start with you, Mr. Quick.
Okay, very good, thank you. Again, I appreciate, uh, the conversation, uh, and being invited to this panel. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, and, uh, statements that are very similar. It sounds like we're very much on the same page on a lot of issues. So, uh, I want to distinguish myself by saying that, um, I bring a lot of leadership experience. I bring a listening ear, a trained ear, a trained listening ear. Yes, it is important. I've heard a lot about, um, listening to the residents, but we need to listen beyond the words. Uh, not just, uh, hey, I have a pothole, but that means my life is difficult. I'm having a rough time. Uh, and so to be able to listen for understanding, uh, I bring that type of servant leadership. Servant leadership is wanting to serve, it's leading, but it's wanting to serve the residents. I believe I bring that, um, uh, special ability to have a new vision. There's a lot that has been said about development, but I haven't heard anything about, uh, the creativity. What's the aesthetics of Union Township? Is it something that's going to want to bring people in? We've got examples all around us, uh, of great communities. I want to be the best community. I want to move Union Township into number one. Uh, I don't want people to say, hey, let's go to Milford, or hey, let's go to Old Milford. Or for the new plant, I don't want them to say, hey, let's go live in Loveland. I want this to be the place to be. Thank you.
Mr. McGraw.
Thank you. Thanks again to all the candidates, um, and for the chamber and the Claremont Sun for putting this on. I first ran for trustee back in two thousand and nine. I didn't win. But since that time, I've spent a lot of time walking door to door. I've been on every single street in Union Township. I've talked to a lot of residents, you know, a lot of talk tonight about listening and, um, understanding residents. Believe me, you get a lot of listening when you're knocking on someone's door and they come out and tell you what they're happy about and not happy about. And I've spent a lot of time, um, trying to understand the biggest problems and issues that people have. And also the reality of, of being a Union Township trustee is we have limited funds to do a lot of the things that people want to do. So I believe it's important to be constantly creative and positive and try to find solutions to bring about some of the changes people like to see. One big change was people complained about Glen SD High School, the roof was leaking, there was no, uh, technology. Taxpayers couldn't come up with the money to build a new high school or refurbish it. The trustees and the school board got together and came up with a creative solution. And it's been tremendous for our community. By the project we have at Glen SD, former Glen SD site, it's able to pay for our new high school. We got credits from the state to build new elementaries. It's hard to put a dollar figure on all that new schools, what that means to the community. People moving in, home values are going up, but that was a creative way to fix a problem a lot of people have. And, uh, I'm very proud of that. So I'm going to continue to be creative, I'm going to continue to listen, I'm going to continue to walk door to door every as many houses as I possibly can. Thank you.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir. I'd like to talk about some of the accomplishments, excuse me, some of the accomplishments I've made during my tenure. You made, I am the senior person here on the squad here. And as a Union Township trustee in Claremont County, Ohio. Years ago, we accomplished getting our new building, our civic center, fifty-seven thousand square foot. The structure was housed as also the West Claremont Board of Education and staff. As well as the Claremont Senior Services, college-rated gymnasium, and the north end used by Ajiva and many nonprofit organizations and citizens of our township, which we're very proud of. We've also had park and ride and, and to our constituents who work downtown, a service provided by Metro. We've collaborated, collaborated with the Claremont County Commissioners on the private sector to develop the Ivy Point area. Now consisting of TQ, uh, TQ Wells and Corp, Mercy Health Center, Sheriff Axe Corporation, Children's Hospital placing a three-plus acre dog park for our citizens to exercise their pets in, at the west end. We've also maintained a care for three other parks in our township. Working in with, with the county, we acquired the old big site for jungle gyms, which is quite a task. Our administrative staff, consisting of many small businesses and eateries and, and Crossroad Church also is now on these premises. Working with the county again, we were able to construct Station fifty-one across from the Veterans Park, Station fifty-two on Buxton Road, and the newest stations, number fifty-three on Beachwood Road. I'm done?
Fifteen seconds.
Oh. We worked, worked, working the county of Milford to put a crossing into River's Edge. Or to consider that the people in the north end have an easier way to access to two seventy-five. We're constantly working with the state and county to create a way to improve our better roads and accesses to our community. Thank you very much. And thank you for putting on this forum tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Mr. Dills.
I wanted to say thank you again to the chamber, Heather, Andrew, Brad, thank you, thank you all for doing this tonight. My main focus and my main theme, if you can't understand that, is listen. Uh, I want to listen to the residents. Uh, the Miller development has been brought up many times, it's been a major issue. And I'll, I'll explain it. The residents, the zoning was already defined by the past trustees many years ago. And they were fine with that. Uh, but the problem is, is that the trustees wanted to change it, and they wanted to change that zoning illegally. And so we're not talking about ten signatures. They got nearly four thousand signatures, uh, to fight their trustees. And the trustees flat out ignored them. That's not listening. And then those folks had a hard partner with the nature center and they spent nearly two hundred thousand dollars to fight their trustees and they won. Not once, but twice. Two judges both ordered that that was illegal. So that is a lack of listening and, and, you know, I, I have not heard it at all. Their response isn't, I'm sorry, I wish I had a mole again or a do-over. It's move on. That's too bad. And so as your trustee, I, I will listen. Um, I'm, I'm the only, I want to make this statement, I'm the only candidate that, that is endorsed by the police, FOP Lodge one twelve. And I was unanimously endorsed. There was not one single no vote. And a lot of those members on the FOP Lodge are members, are police officers in Union Township. And there's a reason why those police officers voted to endorse me and not the incumbents. There's a reason why. They're not happy. They want to see change. And so I will absolutely support our police, fire, EMS. And I've heard from several confidential police officers that we have been eight or nine officers short for the past several years. They're overworked, they work at too many hours, we're short-staffed on shifts, and that affects our residents, um, and our community members. And that's, that's, that's a problem. As your trustee, I will address that concern. Uh, if you take nothing away, take it from this is that I, I, I'm open and I want to listen to what the residents want, not what I want for the future, but for what the residents want, um, for the future of our township. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Mr. Becker.
I want to talk about Ken Geis. Ken Geis is the township administrator. Uh, he's been controversial. Some people love him, some people hate him. I just want to go on record here, I'm a Ken Geis supporter. I, I think he has made some mistakes. I think he's got a brilliant mind. I, I credit him with the development to turn around in Union Township. I've said this repeatedly and publicly and on camera. If it weren't for Ken Geis, Union Township would look like Detroit. I want Ken Geis to stay on as administrator, uh, you know, for as long as he would like to. You know, certainly, uh, you know, for, for the next several years, he, he's got my full support. The, um, the one thing that trustees have to do is be in charge, not have Ken Geis telling trustees what to do, but trustees telling Ken Geis what to do. I think that's, that's a part of the problem that we've had. And the epic failure that we have seen here, of course, is the Miller Place, where, you know, they wanted to increase by four times, four times the residential, uh, headcount at the Rumpy Road subdivision. And the environmental threat to the Cincinnati Nature Center. You know, that kind of stuff can't happen again. And, uh, you know, a lot of people have been, uh, blame Ken for that. Uh, you know, he certainly bears some responsibility, but the ultimate responsibility goes to the trustees because they're the ones who had to vote and, and they had the, the opportunity to vote no. I also want to say that, um, uh, you know, no, again, I said this in the opening, it'll be the depth or the breadth of experience up here that I have. That's going to be invaluable for the people of, uh, Union Township. The, uh, you know, also, I can do this job full-time. I don't have any other activities going on. I'm retired. The only thing I do that keeps me busy in the spring is, is tax work. I have a small tax practice. And something else I want to, uh, talk about a little bit here in the, in the last few seconds. I intend, you're hearing this for the first time, I you can finish it. I intend as a trustee to visit, have lunch or dinner at every restaurant in Union Township.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. And with that, we are out of time. Thank you all for tuning in this evening. Thank you to all of our candidates, took time off the campaign trail, join us this evening. We appreciate, um, you taking the time to inform our members and inform the community about your values and opinions. Uh, we will be posting this video online, uh, by the end of the week, so others may tune in later. Big thanks to the Claremont Sun for co-moderating with us this evening. Brad, any final thoughts? Just thank you again to the chamber and to the candidates for coming up. Awesome. Our next candidate forum will be next Wednesday, October thirteenth, with the three candidates running for Claremont County Municipal Court Clerk. Until then, thanks again and have a great evening.
And I have something to say.
Oh.
I, I have something to say. No, I just want to say thank you to all of you, all five of you. I know, we know what it takes to put yourself out there to run for office. So we appreciate you taking time to inform our chambers again, our, our chamber members again. We want to make sure we're here for the mission of the Claremont Chamber of Commerce, to make Claremont County a preferred place to locate, operate, and grow a successful company. So that is our mission and we're here to educate. So thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.